Okay, I'd like to call to order the Pomer Eagle Larry School District Regular Board Meeting for the month of October. And we have the roll call.
Mitzi Ryschewski?
Here.
Carol Leroy?
Here.
Zachary Rakowski?
Here.
Doris Carson?
Here.
Jeanne Ring?
Here.
Michael Levy?
Here.
Kristiana Williams?
Here.
We definitely have a forum. And I will now read the district mission statement to ensure that students excel with intellect and virtue, inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual. Would you all join me for the pledge? The pledge begins to apply in the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And disapproved. The public comment. We don't have anyone physically here. There was a comment that came through, but it was from someone out of state.
No, that one was in Berkeley. Was it different?
It is in state, okay, and that's in here, so then, yes. Okay? And this is a public comment from Stephanie Salas. And her comment is, "I will recognize virtue in the example set for students by all adults in the larger school community. If you aren't going to mask all kids, could you take this out of your statement?" It's a statement. It doesn't say what area she's from, but her name is Stephanie Salas. Okay, so she might not be in our district, but...
I think she went, she sent Facebook questions, so I think she went to the schools, but it moved away since. Okay.
And that was the only one that came in?
Yes.
Board monitoring. Annual meeting discussion. The meeting has been moved and posted to be October 28th at 7:00 p.m., one week later. And that actually is moved for a really good reason because our superintendent, Dr. Gray, is being honored on the 21st at 7:00 p.m. in Waukesha as Lifetime Educator Award. I can't remember about that, but that seems certainly important enough for us to move our other meeting at least if you can decide that.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
One quick thing on that is that we discussed that, I don't know if we want to move the competition within this room, because we could certainly do that.
I like...
It's gonna be easier to present.
Yes, we can use that.
I mean, last year there were maybe six people.
Who's Dan?
And three were relatives from California.
No, one was... Two were my relatives from California.
If you, if you take the present, I think it looks nicer in here.
It could be much easier.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Caitlin's working on the agenda. We'll get it out to everyone that's pretty simple, like... Any other questions or thoughts on the annual meeting? Hey, COVID monitoring.
Hi, I'm doing technology. I'm trying. COVID is good. We update it whenever we need. Are we all at zero right now? Have we?
No, I think we have two, they might imagine since I did it.
Community quarantines?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Um, zero cases in building and zero cases in quarantine due to exposure at school, so... There's just IC going around, there's some RSV, but nothing related to COVID.
Excellent, very nice. Good, good to hear.
Let's do those deionizers.
D or ionization?
Bipolar ionization.
Yes, knowing was that, can I ask a question? No, just the updates are nice and they're good and you are on it and...
And thank you, because I know our kids are very happy to be in school doing the things they love doing and they're excited to be able to do that.
And it is, you guys do a good job because when community members reach out to us, I send them to the website and it's informative and professional, so thank you.
Anything else on that? Elementary spotlight, that would be Katie.
You need to stop for a minute, 21 play. Okay, we'll talk very... I can step up right here. Um, so now that we've started to change our approach to COVID, we've started doing something on Fridays that I've wanted to do since I started, which is a Panther Prep Assembly, as you'll call it, every Friday. So every Friday from 8:15 to about 8:35 or 8:45, we gather in the gym and we go through a series of nothing but positive and praise for kids. So it's students as a whole classroom who win specialist awards for being safe, respectful, responsible. We highlight birthdays for the week, we highlight student of the month when that's appropriate. And then we do class cheers that are all silly and strange and fun, clapping is out of fashion, and we do things that celebrate in strange ways. Ms. Sanfilippo, our music teacher, was wonderful. She stepped up to write a school song for Palmyra Eagle as a district that we're singing at the elementary level, and the students really get into it. Did send an individual copy of it, so if you have the chance to view it in all your free time, and we're gonna try to get it to show in there. All right, I'll keep going. So, um, the precursor to the Friday Assembly starts with coffee with Katie. So far, we've had six individuals taking advantage of it in the last two weeks. Who, they come in, talk about all things elementary. Right now, the big ones are PTO, Monster Match coming up. And eventually, we'd like to have topics so parents can join on specific topics that they want to talk about. And then I invite the parents in to join in and watch the assembly. The future layers that will be added to the assembly include a mystery teacher who's always watching over her kids, so you never know when the mystery teacher's gonna catch you being good, as well as recognizing the teacher of the month through a kind of like guest teacher format.
Maybe we...
We good?
No, we never know what this, if it turns on, we're good. My favorite piece of...
Or even if you're audio, I can do the audio, people get that. Maybe?
Maybe easier than...
Um, it's going over really well, the kids are really excited. It starts and ends with music. Um, I'll be honest, that very first week, I got a lot of looks, like, a lot of looks from teachers, like, what are you doing on a Friday to amp them up this much? But now, it's an exciting thing that I even have some of our biggest naysayers turning around and saying, yeah, this is a really fun, nice way to start. And kids are getting into routine of what it looks like and what it sounds like.
Don't want to see the blue screen.
Blue screen means no...
Don't want to see the blue, the blue screen.
I've heard about a large pencil within my house.
Oh, yes, so we have inherited a large blue pencil, it was blue. Um, it's very large and actually writes. And so Kaylee's father will be sharpening it here shortly, so we need to write with it. And the purple pencil, we call it a purple, passes from class to class for recognition of something specific. They have that pencil all week, they bring it back, and then they're able to share some of the learning in the classroom. Joel and I have...
We are really on fire tonight.
Joel and I have a running... Science in our classroom. Um, Joel and I have a running skip where we have convinced the children that the pencil weighs like a thousand pounds and we cannot pick it up. So Joel will very comically fall on the floor when he tries to pick it up. And we let the kids convince somehow that they have superpowers and they're able to lift it. Um, this last week, I even brought him some, like, arm weight to give him workouts, so that next week he won't fall over. Um, and the kids really like it and they...
It's not heavy, what are you talking about?
Absolutely.
Yes, it is, you guys are crazy, we don't know what you're talking about.
Um, so it really is a fun stick and banter. Um, if you are unable to play it here, we can put it on the website.
No, Mark.
Um, and I did send an individual copy to you guys with the lyrics as well, so, um, to a tune you may all know. Jake, me, I'm true vote.
All right.
So we can't, we don't think we can play?
I don't think so.
No.
See, I feel better now because I tried to use that work.
Well, I, okay, I will jump in and I had asked Katie to video this and bring it because I was at her assembly and it's adorable. I went to the coffee with Katie, which is actually a fantastic idea. Parents come in and get to ask her questions and hear what's going on. Um, before school starts, it's, it's a great PR thing. And just an open communication thing. And then is the assembly and the whole school got up and they have motions to... Why don't Katie, you do it for us?
I'm getting out of here.
There's motions and words and they're like, take me out to the ballgame and the kids love it.
Jody likes to sing. I'll sing. Jody sings. Jody sings a lot.
Even to the poor kids. I mean, they're all doing it, it's so beautiful.
Um, and even we had some, some questions from people said, are we even gonna include the poor cares? And I said, especially the poor cares, because then they'll be the kiddos who get the most time out of it and see your progresses on. So, um, I'm gonna disappoint you, I will not sing, but I'll read it in a second, okay? One second. Okay, so to the tune of the ballgame, it's, um, Palmyra Eagle has spirit, Panther guides our way. We've got the teachers to help us out. Learning together is what we're about, so let's root for Palmyra Eagle, for Panthers day after day. With respect, responsibility, now we're safe, the Palmyra Eagle way. Okay, that's on film, so...
And they stand up and do motions and everybody cheers and it's really adorable.
And it's fun. And Sarah wrote it like one week and then she folded it in, um, in the running joke. She kept that in music class, so I couldn't hear what was going on. And so the big jig was up and the kids showed me their song, so...
They should come over here and do it for our kids up here some day.
We absolutely love that and I'm sure Sarah will get the copy too, so... We continue on Fridays, as many Fridays as we have, and keep growing from there.
Sounds great.
It's been a good, crazy month of a happy school.
Thanks, Katie. Committee reports. P R and H R are not meeting until this week and the following week. Curriculum policy. Kristiana.
We met last week. The week started to blur together. And we had a lovely update from our new CNI coordinator. Basically, she's kind of went through the whole month of what she did in September and she didn't sleep. And she was working on creating a calendar for assessments, meeting with all the staff, the teachers. Started rolling out some efficiency project presentations. Literally, working through a curriculum list, a best, beginning to evaluate the math curriculum up here at the high school and middle school, algebra, geometry at the high school level. And then, um, next month, right, next month would be the science, I think is what I wrote down. And just trying to align more EES with the middle school, just so everything is very fluent is what we're kind of angling. See? I'm sorry. We discussed some updates needed to our already existing policy regarding physical restraint against students. Kaylee had kind of been working with DPI to upgrade our current policy to meet a law that had changed and kind of affected this policy within this last year. So that is actually on the docket for tonight's critical board. We discussed the early, uh... Sorry.
For the college credit?
Yes, yes, sorry, because I saved the digital slide, nobody knows what I was talking about, but the ECCP and the SCN contracts, those are also on the agenda for tonight. The standard processing, Todd is still reviewing. We talked about the security facilities and school safety, those couple policies that we have on file. Those are really talking about background checks, the different types that we use based on the different situations, kind of clarifying that for all of us. The admins kind of requesting that we look into the Raptor system being updated to expand to meet some different types of offenders. And just basically talked through that, passed that on finance. We did discuss the safety plan as well, and that in our policy is required to be approved by the board every three years legally. It was last done in October of 2019, so we don't have to do that this year. However, we did and kind of just looking at it, noticed that a lot of the contacts, so it provided like an emergency contact list for like Palmyra EMS and the Ferret Chief and things like that, so that would be a quick contact. So Carrie was gonna go ahead and work to update that and get that current with all the people in the community who maybe since retired and stuff like that. So she's working on that. And then the last one, which was discussion of the compliance officers regarding, it's actually listed in a lot of policies, but basically, we were looking to replace that male compliance officer. And Joel got, Joel got voted in, so now it's just basically Caitlin and I sitting down figuring out how many policies exactly have to be updated and that's it.
Thank you. Buildings and grounds, Michael.
Yep, tonight was mostly a lot of follow-up and cleanup of our agenda for the past few months. On a very positive note, we finally have the bipolar ionization generator. Eagle is complete, 100%. Palmyra Eagle, yeah, right, exactly. Palmyra Eagle High School's our third done. The rest of the two pairs should be finished in the next week or so. So that's just a huge step forward. Update on our food service staffing. We're still looking at picking up one more cashier at the high school. Wrap line was kicked off October 4th. We're selling 40 wraps a day, which has been very popular from what I'm hearing. And I think they're gonna start a hot wrap week of 10/18 starting next week. Jumping up to the bar line possibly, the second semester might kick off there. And then breakfast, looks like it's gonna be moved into the 22, 23 year for that. So positive things all around with food. Roof update, our roofing consultant says that we're in good shape, recommends tuck point versus any kind of replacement. We're gonna actually invite a roof inspector here to answer some other questions from, some follow-up on past recommendations. The Eagle Elementary model will be complete. Tonight, we're gonna be voting on the lighting proposal for the lit, the energy piece. Next week, the following week, Eagle signs will be renovated. Let's see what else we have. We're all, we're full up on our custodial staff, which happens to be doing well. The bathroom quotes, we had a little bit of a scoping need in the building and grounds, so we're gonna do a little re-approach instead of a full remodel. Maybe we can do some smaller extensions of the stalls, cleaning countertops and whatnot, but I think we're gonna... And go hands-free, I think that was a topic of discussion, what we're gonna take for us to go hands-free. So I thought that was a positive outcome. No standard process update this month and then, which is gonna fall off the agenda. And then they asked for basketball boards, there was gonna have to take theirs, so we took that off our agenda as well. And we're voting next month, that's it.
Thank you. Finance committee, Mitzi.
Finance meant tonight. Our budget is ready. It has been sent to the newspaper for publication for unveiling on October 28th at the annual meeting, which will establish that. It's announced. So, and it should be very joyful. We discussed facilities, safety and security upgrades with our current electronic program and background checks that we utilize for our volunteers. Are going to carry that over to the next year so that we can, or to the next month to get a final update on what our cost would be as well as what the options are. And then it may need to progress to other places before we actually come to a vote. We reviewed vouchers, discussed cleaning up some of teachers being out of pocket versus purchase orders, and that's under review. We also had an update on the activity accounts, which, thank you for doing that. The parties involved did a wonderful job clearing out past mistakes. We're getting a couple of accounts removed because they're just pass-through accounts and shouldn't really be activities. And Carrie has told us she'll try to submit those like monthly or as they're updated because some do have. And it encouraged a lively discussion of what activities we have, and that was the financing.
Thank you, Mitzi. WSB update. That's Tara.
Okay, so we have coming up on October 20th, Wednesday, the regional meeting at the Monte Carlo Room in Elkhorn. So they have a couple of options changed because of the COVID protocols that they updated. So you can either just do the dinner at 6:30 or you can skip the dinner and just do the program at 7:30. I don't know who's all, I mean, I'm going to more than vote. But the program is in person at 7:30. But I think what you were thinking about is the Zoom. They're doing their director, regional director elections being done via Zoom. And you should have all gotten in the mail information on the two nominees. I can, as your WSB representative, if that's okay with everyone, I can go ahead and vote for the half of the district of, you all want to send me which of the candidates you support for that. And I can take care of that via Zoom, except no one actually got a Waukesha or take care of that.
Didn't Mitzi ask for a vote for that?
There was, there was some confusion. Because she was thinking, because she's CSO and I'm WSB, I kind of overlap a little bit in some of that stuff, but...
And I was reasonably sure I was only CSO, but someone had approached me very confidently saying, you are our last representative. And I was like, oh, I didn't know that had changed and I wasn't told. So I took it upon myself rather than us missing out on having that information. So it is Tara that should be doing it.
So did you forward whatever we sent to you to Tara? No.
I have not.
Okay.
I'm just asking, okay.
So, yeah, they battled it on the parking lot. It will be voting and Mitzi was very courageous.
And if Tara wants to go to CSO, she should do that.
No, I'm good.
It was a strange year because neither were meeting in person because of COVID. So Mitzi did not go to the CSO things and Tara didn't go to the WSB thing, so we're kicking back in, but yes, so it's...
No, and I do appreciate voting, being, I tell them, is making sure that someone is responsible. Because, yeah, we don't want to miss out on opportunities, so...
Yes, and so that's a Zoom voting, but anyone who wants to go in person to the meeting or the dinner, now let Caitlin know, I know Brad was, had registered people. And he can, we can still register up until, I think?
Day of.
Day of. Or unregistered, if you were registered, you're not able to go now. So... All right. Administrator reports. Any of you have one you'd like to give? Homecoming? Happy, happy homecoming. Unfortunately, we didn't get to do product yesterday for the rain, but did dodgeball, did volleyball in the gym. We did volleyball, champions were staff today. Staff won, so there you go. Pretty much otherwise, normal stuff going on, movie night tomorrow night, bonfire on Thursday, football game parade, all that on Friday. Big thanks to Shelby Nichols, who's our head student council rep. And then we actually have four class reps working with her, so it's Ally Murphy, Kate Gatesad, Ashley Peever and Marianne Francineki are doing that. And then Vic Bowden and Tammy Anderson are middle school student council, so they're kind of in charge of all the, all the craziness you see. Seniors will be going to Eagle Saturday, or Friday morning, not Saturday morning.
Right.
Friday morning, which is always one of the, I think, highlights and the coolest things that I've never seen any other districts do that, so I know the kids are, are super excited about that. Fast bridge testing is done. Jody has been working with sixth and seventh grade to do some running records and look at some of that data. I think that's gonna lead to some really interesting conversations, like four, five, six, seven, just about alignment and kind of how we're using it. We are all working on in-service. We have in-service, October 22nd is a full staff in-service day, no school day on the 25th. We're gonna kick off the new effectiveness project, I know I'm never gonna say it right. Evaluation model, I was thinking maybe next month, board monitoring, we could do that and while something else comes up, just to kind of show the board the differences between what we were doing and what we are gonna be doing. Do you think, do you look at me like we got something else, we got something else?
Uh, elementary school, we're doing data days tomorrow, data day tomorrow. Let's meet with all the teachers, go over students and interventions. Go ahead, let's play it back there.
I was gonna say, yeah, you can say. We are doing, elementary is joining the parade this year for homecoming, so we'll do separate different flows that are happening. Our theme will be a surprise. And then the kids are loving Spirit Week, so tomorrow's Tidy Day, and the Disney Day and a Panther Day as well. Data day is tomorrow, things are really strong in that respect. Our Raptor Care in the afternoon program, we just enrolled other students who are at 26 in the afternoon. So two teachers and 26 kids, which is a really good number to have. Things are really smooth with that this year. And we got choir concert already coming up for Halloween for the school. We will continue the Halloween parade that'll come up at the end of the month. Parents really like that, so we'll continue it.
Monster Mash?
Oh, yes, and Monster Mash is coming back as a PTO event. So it'll be a nighttime event on the 29th from 5 to 8. We're working on a haunted woods and talking through some different options we could have for families. And there'll be face painting and dancing. Ms. Sanfilippo will be our DJ, complete with music and excitement. And we're excited, so October is definitely the busiest month of the trimester. Anyone else?
Okay, consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes. Action items. Action item A. Consider approval of the following organization as recognized district support organization, and that would be the Panther Band Booster Association.
Motion to consider approval of the Panther Band Booster Association.
A second?
Awesome.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Which is really good because if you look to the consent agenda, hand boosters have two through five really major, awesome fundraising events that they're gonna do for our kids, so...
They're actually giving concessions for homecoming on Friday, so...
Okay. You're doing great, thanks.
Can I use more volunteers if anyone wants to come help the band boosters out there? Shut up.
It's a good shut up.
Can I ask, what's the Panther Browns? I feel like it should be coffee, but...
It is coffee.
It is coffee.
It is coffee. It used to be kids on Fridays with our, with our ID classroom. We're not doing kids because of COVID, just some of that, so they're gonna, they did nothing last year. We're gonna start small and just do staff stuff, it is sort of, meat, yes, coffee, tea, things like that.
Hot chocolate.
Hot chocolate, yep, smoothies. No, that's a good question, because Browns, I was thinking buildings and Browns. And so I'm looking at it too and I'm like, oh, it's the coffee.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, I'm not fundraising for any.
Okay, action item B for the ECCP SCN, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the ECCP hash CN. What did it just say there?
You're, this is the approval of the courses, right?
Well, yes, yeah, I don't know.
It should be the...
The way the agenda was written, I don't really prefer.
Spring course.
Yeah. It's the spring, it's not the program, it's the spring people.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to consider approval of the ECCP SCN for the spring 2022 semester?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and yes, any further questions? It was in our board packet, it had the listing. You have to prove, I think you have to approve that course by course. One approval?
Yeah.
Well, then, I'm under discussion. I have two that I do not think that they qualify because of our e-dynamics purchases of courses. It would eliminate student B Introduction to Python Programming, Tonsai 170, as well as student C, WCTC, Python Programming 152 101. Did you think...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I think you have to go through course by course, because otherwise, if you approve it, you're proving that they can take any of those courses and there are some on there we don't recommend you approve. There are others, I believe, Mitzi, as well.
I didn't...
Some were the prerequisites are, are issues.
Could you... Could you?
Some of the prerequisites are issues?
Yes, I saw one of them taking the prerequisite.
And then there's a duplicate course, another duplicate course issue. Wilding?
So in the past, I thought we had to approve by student, not by course.
That's what I was thinking. But then you're going to, I don't know, Todd, you know, you know. So it's ECCP courses and Star College Now courses. But there are courses, I'm going to be honest, that should not be approved. So you almost have to go line by line through those and approve each course or deny each one.
Correct.
Could you give us your recommendations of which ones you do not think qualify, other than the two that I mentioned?
So I believe there are some concerns about student C. Academically, they meet the good standing, but there are some other concerns. And there are courses that should not be approved because they have not met the prerequisites at WCTC. And then there are courses that should not be approved because it's a duplicate. So the welding course, I have, don't, I can pull it up.
Here.
Is there an issue with us voting down that motion to approve them all this meeting? And then bringing it back next week specifically? No, they have, they have to be approved. They have, state statute, they have to be approved in October.
Okay, well, let's, if we're going to put line by line, we start at the top at least, so that's easiest for everybody, who starts with student A.
Yeah.
Uh. And then Richard? Mitch, it's.
Student A, student B, student C.
Okay, so we'll be student A, and you want us to do it course by course here. So we'll talk, the beginning Chinese 141. It looks like there are no prerequisites. We have no courses here offered, there's no issues with that. I would make a motion to approve that.
I would second.
Any further questions or discussion on the motion to approve the first one listed?
How many are there?
Yeah, I don't know.
You may want to just list the ones that are for student A, can we just either approve it?
If there's no concern for student A, you could just approve all of it.
Okay, all right. I'll make a motion to approve all of the courses listed for student A, as seems like everything is, that college prerequisites, and there's no courses we offer.
I would second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Student A is approved.
Can we do student B this way? I have a motion to approve, with the exception of the Introduction to Python Programming. That's the only issue with that one.
I think you can do it that way, yeah. Is there a second for that?
I would second that. Can I ask just one question with that then? So that, the way that it's listed, it to me, it appears that there would be two of our courses to their one, and our two courses still only add up to 80% of what that college.
The minimum threshold in ECCP is 80%. So I sent the course syllabus to E-Dynamic, and they analyzed it, and basically came back and said the student would have to take two E-Dynamic courses to parallel the 80%, to meet the 80% threshold.
Can you off the top of your head tell me how much each of our E-Dynamics courses cost?
Not, well, no, because it's a package.
It's a package.
It's a package, like $18,000 deal for the whole.
Okay, I thought that we had paid per.
We did not, that may eventually be, but for right now, they still allow us to do unlimited seats, unlimited classes.
In a bunch, okay, all right. Okay, that's, sorry, I just.
Do we have a motion and a second for student B? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Wait, what's the second? I, okay.
Okay, sorry, Caitlin, you have to get which ones they deny.
I do.
Okay.
They know.
We have to know which ones they don't. Student C. Do we have a motion to approve student C?
So are we just questioning? There's three references that I put in that. There were a couple of them. So we do the first four.
So, well, basic shop skills, you must take 412, 110 before, or consecutively. So the prerequisites are not met. So I would move that for student C, basic shop skills, 412 to 118 be denied under. I don't know if that's a way to do it.
The next one's not met either. The graphic design says prerequisites not met.
Right, so the top two. So what they just, they go top two and just save them for the bottom four?
No. Because the Python programming, we also, we have classes.
And the medals. So if the only one that actually works that could be taken is the drawing color theory? So.
And principles of food preparation.
The drawing color theory 201-118? What about principles of food preparation?
That's bad.
But don't they have to be a color? We know they're not.
But the color and drawing has a class here.
But they, well, they've taken this option. No, they've only taken one. I would move that we deny all classes under student C.
But wait, it does say student has taken drawing and painting.
The painting, drawing one, there's a painting and drawing one, and a painting and drawing two course. That's not worded very well, I apologize. They've taken painting and drawing one.
So they, okay, so there's.
So there's one more course here that they still have not taken.
Correct.
Sorry, that wasn't.
I agree with you.
So I move to deny of the requested student C.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Any further questions or discussion?
I would just like to state, while I think it's an extremely valuable program, they need to utilize the classes that we have here. We have good quality courses. And it, and they need to be the prerequisites to be able to take advantage of it.
Good point. Any further discussion? All those in favor of denying student C, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action item C. Consider approval of first reading of revisions to policy 5630.01.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the first reading of the revisions to policy 5630-DAH-01, Use of exclusion and physical restraints of students.
Second. Any questions or discussion?
Didn't we get confirmation regarding Neola? We had some discussion, discussion in curriculum policy. We are all this double number.
Yep.
It's the day. I did send it, asked Todd to clarify that there would be no issue, legal issue, with using this policy versus something provided by Neola. I was told to go ahead.
I, you know, I know Neola provides us some legal support, but I don't know how good it is. I mean, quite honestly, I'd love to, in fact, I'll be talking about this in my report or in my ass. But we would want the companies to, whatever, take over. They would, they would let it fall through. You know, something that. We, we're covered there. I mean, the policies may, but they, there was nothing, I found nothing on there that was really, that would create a legal issue. So I think we're good.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to thank you for doing a really nice job then. I really appreciate the highlighting.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. D. Consider approval of mentor contracts for the 21, 22 school year.
I would like to consider approval of the mentor contracts for the 21, 22 school year.
I'll second. Can I ask a question? Because I don't remember approving this last term, I'm guessing it didn't happen because of COVID.
No, it did happen. You proved it.
Did we approve it?
Late, I think it was late, but they would have been approved. Or they shouldn't have been.
What's, what does the program consist of? I don't think it's ever been explained to me, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. So they, you prove the individual mentors, like all the individual teachers. So every new teacher is assigned a mentor. Part of their job is kind of procedural, like how do you give staples, how do you make happy some of that? They also do some reflecting stuff with Amy Muth and Shelby Nichols. They have meetings throughout the year, they're the coordinators. The mentors or the mentees do a book study, do some kind of things like that. Kind of depends on how experienced or inexperienced the group is as far as where the dynamic takes some of. Really, the purpose of the individual person, so you have somebody to go to if you need something. Because no matter how much experience you have, every building runs differently. You know, there's always different things going on, so there's always questions to be answered. Pretty standard process in schools. Lots of districts do actually a first and a second year. We normally, we don't have enough bodies go around to keep them forever, but it's just trying to give you that go-to.
Is there a reason why some have two in?
Um, I don't think any of, so it just depends on demand. It depends on probably in cage role, but it depends on who it is. Yeah, and who that person is. Last year, I had a lot, so I did some grouping last year as well, because I just didn't have enough bodies to go around. So it kind of depends on that. Who's going to work together naturally, like in a team? Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F. Consider approval, oh.
E. Thank you, Zach, that's over here.
Consider approval of new teacher mentor program coordinator, Patrick. We have a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the new teacher mentor program coordinator, Patrick.
I'll second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, F. Consider approval on the Focus on Energy Rebate and LED Lighting Project. This has been talked about.
I'll like the motion to consider approval on the Focus on Energy Rebate and LED Lighting Project.
Second. Is there a second? I might. Any questions or discussion?
Are we recommending? We just said the approval, are we utilizing the recommendation of our Buildings and Browns Director? Or not saying who? I'm just, I just want to get clear. That my assumption is right, that we're using their recommendation?
F, the people.
I was. So we are, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Right. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. District administrator, administrative reports.
Okay, a few things. I've been talking to folks about a policy issue with standard process field policy. And I'm going to recommend that it go into a contract form, simply because, I mean, I think it might be a good, a good way to ensure that we are taking care of the fields. But I think this contract form is legally defensible versus a policy, which can be very easily ignored. And there's very little, not as much legal redress if someone comes and says, well, you're not following your policy. Unless, or it can waive the policy, the board can't waive a contract. No one wants to sign a motion, wants to, so that I would recommend, and I have been talking to Michael about, developing, I guess, a separate organization to manage, raise funds, mostly because that also will give us a little more leeway to fund a, fund a cover system too. So we'll have an actual partner tool versus another part of the school district. And it's a policy, it looks like it's a school district's organization. And I think that that might be tough to convince others that funding, funding these sort of events. So that's the recommendation on that. I know we'll hear more about it later on. I do have some ideas, I did, it's going to be Thursday, I have some of those ideas too. I think it's something, break up, maybe, could even be the November form. Not the majority of the board feels policy is necessary. I'm sure we can make that work, but I just think that we are better off if we have this contract, either this separate organization, if we can form, or with standard processes.
So just to be clear, I guess, so it would be in a how or above the old ways contract?
Yeah, it would be, it would be, I guess, yeah, I would do that, because I think the past contract probably was not followed. And I make the update that I would, I would do a maintenance of that contract. And then the other issue is my former, you probably see in the news, my former district just got handed a federal lawsuit because they do not have a mandatory mask policy. I think we're going to wait and see where that goes. But they initiated themselves that lawsuit actually are completely different part of the state. The Monacwa, and their goal is to literally get every school district force into a mask. So if for some reason, because we do have one of our schools in Lockshaw County, they seem to be targeting, if for some reason we would get some kind of lawsuit, and obviously the media is going to call you and say, what do you think? Basically saying, we're not, we're not going to discuss it at this point. So I don't know. I hope that doesn't happen. I am prepared to go. I think if it should happen by that time, there would, there will be a lot of legal review of this before it even hits. I have read through the document, I don't know, it's kind of sketchy to me, and it's being filed by attorney of Las Vegas. This is all the call. There you go. I mean, they apparently could even find Wisconsin attorney to handle it. So I will just have to see where it goes, but if something should happen, it could be delivered to all board members, because the Lockshaw one, they did name each board member individually. So if a process server shows up, don't, nothing to panic. I know those aren't fun things to deal with. The first time I got in one of those, that was maybe years ago, as part of the Ashgard School District. It was kind of scary. Now with the years, I realize that almost never turn out to be much of anything. So if you get that, call me or call Doris right away and let her know, and we'll react to that as our legislative council shows up. In this particular case, insurance companies will, our insurance company will get involved, and they will, they will either name attorney or they'll say, go ahead and use your own on this one. But it's, you know, I'm just hoping that given size, they have it for us. But I will say this, having ionizers and ionizers in place does help somewhat. Because one of the other issues in the Lockshaw issue, lawsuit, was that they dropped all their COVID protections, whereas in this district, we're actually adding COVID protection. And I know principals are still doing other things to make sure kids are protected. So at least we've got some, some good activities on our side in this particular case. Like I said, it's just, we can see.
Do I have to invest in sunglasses and a mustache? This is what I'm saying.
No, I, I'll be honest, I think more than likely, first of all, they have to, they would have to find a student or parents of a student in the district, otherwise they would have to stand in. Students, you don't have a reason to do that. So first of all, they have to find that. And I think that could be a rough situation for a parent who would actually do that. So, yeah, no, there would be no reason to. I mean, because at that point, we would be one of many. I think right now it's Lockshaw and I think Fall River, is that up by?
Yeah, that's pretty far.
Yeah, they're the two right now that are.
Target and River. Or Fall River, that's not rural.
So it's like. Right, right. So anyways, that's, that's where that is at. And we'll be watching. I can already tell you there is a lot of legal activity already winding up on this one, because it could have some hard reaching implications. That's it.
Thank you. Brad, anything up?
Just getting very quickly in your meeting, just finished the budget, posted to the paper. Just wanted to point out that I just, the whole, this is the whole, the upcoming.
now coming together with Shelley and Joanna, we're all doing, uh, pretty good work down in the office with everything business related, uh, a lot of people have been comfortable going to Shelley as far as HR's perspective, a lot of people come down to our offices a lot more, so that's nice, um, that's about it.
Thank you. Any announcements or board comments?
I just have a, a quick shout out I'd like to give, um, there's a, a new initiative in Palmyra, the Palmyra beautification project, I'm sure, probably those, the scarecrows and stuff going on downtown, I've had the pleasure of working with some of the ladies and helping with a little bit of that, um, and they're actually, um, are doing a good job of wanting to make sure that the district is proudly represented, so one of, one of the things that they're gonna be working on this week, they wanna get it done before homecoming parade, is there's going to be a Panther Athletics window display, put in windows in the neighborhood of Elsinore, right on Main Street, next to Swinney's, um, she actually contacted our athletic director to get some goodies, some older athletic type stuff to put in her window display, so, I thought that was kind of, kind of cool, she also reached out to our, um, shop teacher about having the shop classes build some planter boxes to put out in the community, so that could be another project, that shop class, possibly the art class, um, the students were actually pretty excited about it, um, when the teacher asked them if that would be something they'd be interested in doing, and they're very excited about giving back to the community and, and leaving their mark on Main Street, so, I, I thought it was cool that there's, um, some more opportunities to showcase the talents of our students and the things that we do here, as you come into, come into town and to write on Main Street for everyone.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, um, the upcoming meetings are listed for you. We need a motion to adjourn to close session and a roll call, vote for them.
adjourn to a close session.
I'll second.
Do you take a roll call roll?
Was your own testing? Yes. Excuse me, Carol LaRus.
Yes.
Zachary Kowski.
Yes.
Nora Sarson.
Yes.
Jeanne Ring.
Yes.
Michael Eddy.
Yes.
Sierra Williams.
Good. We are now a close session at 7:48, 7:47. Thank you all.
Thank you guys.
Good night.
Happy homecoming!